So we can start the meeting at 6:32. And first order of business is public comment. Numbers of public in the room other than Senator Pertik, who's going to participate in the discussion in just a few minutes. And let's see, we have someone on Zoom. Amanda, you want to go ahead, please?
Hi, everybody. My name is Amanda Grace. I am a parent in Missoula, Raspberry. And I am here today as a mother of a wonderful seven-year-old. Will give me permission to look at Abraham. He has been in the district with an IEP since CH3, and I am grateful for the love he has received from many educators, speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapy contractors. He's struggling to read. Yes, he needs accommodation due to his disability, which includes ADHD and many more. I can see the interaction between his frustration with reading, his loss of esteem, and harassment incident he experienced at his after-school program. Today, I bring a lot of questions for you. I have sent a few emails with resources about a stalled story documentary about reading instruction, and I have not seen any deep conversations in the school board meetings about it. And what I have seen is consistency from parents who have been advocating for their kids for the past few years. Here's the premise: Our district primarily relies on balanced literacy instruction at a tier-one classroom level. In general education, small group, providing and reading and phonics instruction, all instructional programming is available that I know of. Today, this year, we have spent $69,261 in relation to the teacher college of reading. The district has in the past currently only provided district-wide teacher curriculum and balanced literacy instruction. The trainers are from the teachers' college, and they implement this. We also use the fonics and final assessment. And we just bought a bunch of fonics and final readers notebooks, as well as Lucy Coughlin's jumper readers plasma. My question is, or many questions that I have, is how are my child, in his years of all abilities, access to access science-based literacy instruction if our school district is devoid of the assessment required to match learning needs with teachers trying to offer high-quality science or reading instruction? How is my child, in his years of all abilities, able to access science-based literacy instruction if we are continuing to use methods that have been developed? The teachers' college of reading was founded by Lucy Coughlin, and she has made millions of dollars harming my many children. Why are we investing in furthering someone whose methods are now supported by research and who have a history of using methods contrary to evidence? Yes, she's made some changes. There's a New York Times article that Mark Seidenberg and I quote, says, he's a cognitive neuroscientist, and he says that while he found some of the revisions encouraging, he was concerned that objectionable concepts remain. The fonics and final assessment has many problems, including the fact, and I quote, that the benchmark assessment system, which is what we use, was field-tested on typical students. They included in their study only proficient English students who were already reading at a great level. Now, I'm going to send you this document with some more researches. The last piece of it is that we use a three-QM system, which is dead wrong and has been debunked and harmful, and I believe is harming my child's ability to advance. If you have the chance to read my literacy public comment document in the literacy council, I will send it to you. Studies show that explicit phonemic awareness and phonics instructions, which we do use a little bit of, consistently provide a learning advantage. There are no such studies supporting three-QM system. And there's many articles I will send you about and research that shows the difference. As a district, we need better ways to verbalize the way that we use evidence, data, and also rely on qualitative data to carry out work for all of our kids. Qualitative data is our stories as parents, and students is a big piece missing. I'm very nervous and shaky myself. If you don't understand it, let me know, because my answer makes it triple. We need to do better not to pick teachers against parents. This is not about this. This is not why I'm here. Libby and I fundamentally disappeared in her testimony against dyslexia bill in 2020, where she states that the vast research showing that most students is identified with a special need, they fall further and further behind their peers. This is not the first time I've heard this. I am not sure what the vast research is, but I can provide other research that shows that the advantages of identifying children with learning difference early is cheaper than later on when they need intervention and they can't really catch up. So for the past year, I have seen Henry's light get dimmer, and his music within quiet and down. He has come home crying. He calls himself stupid. He's seven years old. He was screaming in the back that he hated himself, every bit of him. Okay? In a few occasions in his after-school program, he was called repeated by other kids, big head with small brains. His sister was there to defend him, and probably the only reason why I found out. I'm not here about that, but I'm here because this is a systemic issue, and we need to correlate it. Reading is struggling is also correlated with low self-esteem issues, and he's feeling it. This is a systemic issue. Reading is an equity issue. Recent data shows that English language learners perform significantly worse than non-English language learners, and blacks and Americans, Indians, or Alaska natives perform significantly worse than white students and other racial groups. If you look at the data from the corrections department, who has youth and who are educating our youth who ended up in the corrections department, they have extremely low literacy level. Here's a pipeline, and we need to do better. A special education audit is currently underway, and the only parent input was a survey, not sure that it's been in correlation. I have heard Li and her team working hard to make systems, but what about the kids that cannot wait, or a system that is not ready? I know my kid can't wait, and I will give him what he needs, but others might not be able to. It's probably going to get him a tutor, and we're going to be... Somebody said that education here is a rich man's game. I don't know what that means, but it means that if you have the opportunity to get the resources that you need, you'll get it, and if you can't, you can't. So I really hope that as a board, you have the conversation and help the state make decisions to give our kids what they need. This is not just about Henry, but about many kids in our district. There's a design principle that I really love that says, "We view change as emerging from an accountable, accessible, and collaborative process rather than as a point and end of process." I hope we use this principle in our district to work collaboratively with parents and with other experts that know. We are not here as part of some other institutions. We are here as parents, getting the resources that they need. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the comments, very well stated. Any other public comment?
Just another hand.
Hi, Jim. Grace Pazin.
Oh, hey, Grace.
Hi, I'm real one. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Grace Pazin. I'm a parent of two children at UES. One is currently a fourth grader who is gifted and dyslexic, and the other is a first grader who is bright and neurotypical. Both of my students have also struggled to acquire early literacy skills while at UES. And I'm sorry, this is emotional. I've reached out to this board about these issues before. I'm here tonight because I'm worried that many children in our district aren't learning to read and write proficiently, not for lack of ability, not for lack of caring on the part of teachers, that's very clear to me, but because our district doesn't use an evidence-based structured literacy curriculum to teach foundational literacy skills. As Amanda already covered in some depth, my understanding from conversations with my very mother instructors in the building is that many, if not all, teachers at UES are using Lucy Coughlin's units of study to teach reading and writing, and it espouses a balanced literacy approach, which encourages SMV, which is Structure Meaning Visual System, and that's commonly referred to as three-Qing, which has been shown by research to be an ineffective reading strategy that is utilized by poor readers to compensate for a lack of decoding skills. And decoding skills are what you get through structured, direct, explicit, systematic phonics instruction. So in 2020, Student Achievement Partners, a nonprofit focused on improving student achievement, particularly for students facing barriers of racism and poverty, convened a panel of literacy experts to review units of study against the relevant research base, and they found it lacking in phonics and foundational skills building and supports for English language learners. Then in 2021, Units of Study was awarded a failing grade by Ed Reports, which is also an independent nonprofit that uses expert educators to review K-12 curricula against common core standards. Finally, in 2021, Georgia Policy Labs issued a report of its study evaluating the impact of the Lucy Coughlin's program in elementary schools in the metro Atlanta School District. And given the available data, they found no evidence that the Lucy Coughlin's reading program had a positive effect on reading achievement gains in grades one through three. I'm also happy to share all of those reports with the board after the meeting. So are there students in our district who are succeeding in the current balanced literacy curriculum used in many of our district classrooms? Of course there are, but that's likely because they're part of the 40% or so learners that research shows are going to learn to read proficiently regardless of the instruction model. The evidence also tells us that the remaining 60 or so percent of students, which includes learners with specific learning disabilities, but also a majority of typical learners, will only acquire reading proficiency through direct, explicit, and systematic structured literacy instruction. Both of my kids fall into that 60% category, one with a diagnosed learning disability and the other a bright, typical learner. Both of them have struggled in their early academic career to acquire certain literacy skills, and both of them have lacked access to consistent, evidence-based, structured literacy instruction in their classrooms. And as Amanda also pretty eloquently mentioned, while my partner and I are privileged, middle class, white professionals with all of the resources to pay out of pocket for learning evaluations and tutoring to meet our kids' needs, which we do because we love them and this stuff is hard, you know, we're worried about the kids who don't have those resources available to them, and those are the kids that are going to fall through the cracks, that have these burdens going to be borne by a per-pac, English language learner, low-income, learning disabled, and other marginalized students. And to the extent that this board cares about equity, which, you know, I personally know a lot of the folks on the board, and I think you do, this literacy education piece is a gaping black spot for the district, and I'm asking you to do something about it. So I didn't think I was going to be this emotional. This is quite the speech, but the question I want to review with is, you know, why would we ignore the settled body of evidence and continue to invest in a balanced literacy curriculum that teaches three-Qing when we know, I mean, we've known for decades that nearly all students can and will learn to read proficiently with direct, explicit structured literacy instruction? Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Any other comments? For some reason, I'm not seeing hands. Is that it? Or it wasn't? I didn't see it. All right, thank you for that. We definitely, that is a subject we're paying a lot of attention to, so we appreciate the feedback.
Can I just request? That was, I very much appreciate both of you showing up, Amanda and Grace, and if you wouldn't mind emailing us what you shared tonight, just so that we can fully understand it, because it's a lot to take in just in hearing it. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
No, thank you for that, Mia. Moving on to consent agenda, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, consent agenda moves or passes. Who, I just, because I'm on Zoom. So next, we're very fortunate to have several of our legislators here. I think what we division is kind of an open discussion, also some introductions. I know there's some new folks in the legislature representing Washington County and Montpelier-Roxbury, Montpelier and Roxbury, and also some new board members, so thinking this is a quick introduction, and then I'd like to see the time to the legislators to let us know what they feel is of importance in terms of education, what's on their plates, what we should be paying attention to, and I think we've got a few questions about some things like the PCB study, the equity weighting, our ballot, which we're going to pass later that we'd like to discuss, and maybe a few other items. So let's just start with the board. I'm Jim Murphy. I'm the board chair. I've been on the board since, I think, 2016, if memory serves, and I live in Montpelier, and I'm an environmental lawyer with National Wildlife Federation for my day job. Mia?
Thanks, Jim. Hi, Andrew.
Hi.
Hi, everyone on the call. I'm Mia Moore. I'm a Montpelier representative to the school board, and I'm also a parent of three kiddos in the district. And this is my, I think I'm going into my third year on the board, and yeah, my day job is doing coaching and consulting on, to help managers and teams work together in equitable and inclusive and collaborative ways. So I work for myself doing that.
I'm Anika Kulcarney. I've been on the board since 2020, so finishing of the third year. I live in Montpelier as well, and I have, we have a daughter who's in the high school. And as my, in my day job, I own a software development and consulting company. So I've enjoyed being on the board the last three years, and I've learned a lot. Thank you.
I'm Rhett Williams. I live in Roxbury. I have two first graders and a senior in the district, and I work for the Department of Mental Health.
Hi, Andrew. Kristen Getler. Hi, Anne and Kate. My name is Kristen Getler. I am a resident of Roxbury. I have a second grader here at Roxbury Village School. I serve on the facilities and energy committee, as well as the equity committee for our board. And my day job is, I'm the assistant director for CVSU After School, and I co-manage our small family farm. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Lynn Turcot. I'm representing Montpelier. This is my fourth board meeting, having been appointed to fill in a vacancy, so I'm on serious catch-up duty, but I am planning to run and try to be on for another three years. I have an interest in boards and community service. I've been on a number of boards, and I'm a retired clinical psychologist, and I have two grandkids in the Montpelier school system, so I'm interested in, and I've worked in the schools. I'm interested in educational issues.
Libby, I forgot, of course, my most important biography is I have three kids in the school too.
Oh, and I'm on the equity and the IEP negotiations.
Libby?
I'm Libby Bolesdale. I live in Jericho. I'm the superintendent of schools.
I'm Merrick Moden. I'm a student representative on the board since last February.
I'm Jill Remick. I'm a Montpelier resident, and I'm also the Montpelier-Roxbury School Board representative on the Center for Vermont Career Center Board. I also have a high school student in Montpelier, and I work at the tax department in my day job.
We have two members on Zoom. Seiji and Emma, do you want to introduce yourselves quickly?
Yep, my name is Seiji Ohashi. I live in Montpelier. I'm coming up on one year on the school board. I have two kiddos in the system, and I work for the Agency of Digital Services for the state.
Hi, I'm Emma Bayhandsom, and I represent Montpelier. I have two kids in the school district, and I serve on the policy committee and facilities and energy committee. And I was a teacher for a while, and now I'm working for Vermont Higher Education Collaborative, and we do professional development for teachers.
Good opportunity to come to these small schools that we have in Vermont. I always enjoy it. I'm Andrew Perchlik. I represent the Washington Senate District, which is all of Washington County, plus Stowe, plus Orange, plus Braintree. This will be my third term, and the first two terms I was on education, so spent a lot of time on education policy, had the joy of talking to Superintendent Bolesdale very often in that committee, the literacy comments that we heard at the beginning, we talked a lot about that. Really found that interesting, but had an opportunity to move to a different committee, so this year I'm on appropriations, I'm the vice chair of appropriations, and so we'll be looking at education issues from the kind of appropriations side, but still have an interest in education for sure.
I miss you.
It's an all-new, all the education senate committees, all new, except for the chair. Everybody is new, but there's some good people, including a teacher.
Let's go to Zoom. I don't know who wants to go first. Anne? Anne Watson? Either Anne.
Yeah, there's two Anne's. I'll follow up for Andrew. I'm Senator Anne Cummings. I am the senior senator and one of the few returning seniors to the Senate. I chair finance, and for two years I did chair education. I live in Montpelier. I put four children through the Montpelier school system. I've got grandkids in Vermont school systems, but the closest ones, I have two grandsons in Barrytown, but do follow education as closely as I can. And my committee is responsible for the education fund, read that property taxes, so I do, and I see a lot of Jill Remick in her day job.
Great, well, my name's Anne Watson. I am the newest senator from the Washington District, and I just want you to know I am joined today by my little human, Peter, who is just, he just finished dinner, and this is actually why I'm not there in person right now, I'm on childcare duty right now, so, but I'm psyched to be here. I know many of you already, as I am also a teacher in the districts, in this district I teach physics and engineering and math. And yeah, I am on the National Resources and Energy Committee. I am actually the vice chair of that committee, and I'm also on government operations. And I don't want to get too far ahead, but we did just today vote out of committee a bill that I think is going to be relevant to you all, so happy to jump in about that one at times.
And Kate?
Yeah, I'm Kate, and I can relate to your newest board member, who's been there, this is her fourth meeting. This is my third week at the State House, so I am learning all the time. I am on the House Ed Committee. We've been hearing a lot of testimony on public property tax monies going to pay for independent schools. And today, we were talking with folks from the Principals Association and Superintendents Association and the AOE about the workforce shortage, so I'm very concerned about recruitment and retention of teachers in our schools. I have two daughters here in Montpelier. I do live in Montpelier. I have a daughter at Main Street Middle School in eighth grade, and then my oldest has just gone off to college this fall. I'm a teacher also, like Anne Watson, I teach at U32 High School, and I teach math there. Looking forward to conversations.
Yeah, no, thank you, everyone. I think we'll kind of, whoever wants to, you know, take the lead in terms of talking about some things that are on the plate, you know, again, I raised a few issues that I think are on our mind. Obviously, you know, the waiting study, implementation of that, which is going to have an impact on our bottom line. You know, the PCB study, which we know is out there and has been a big issue in Burlington, and we have at least one building that was built in the kind of 50s, which we know was an era where there's definitely the potential for PCVs to be in the building. Two buildings? And this building? Okay. And then I'll just raise it now, you know, the way this has kind of come up during our conversation, because we have, the budget we're passing, or we are going to pass tonight most likely, has about a 9.4% per pupil increase, but as you probably obviously know from being on the education committee, you know, with the crazy tax formula, it's a modest tax increase for the Montpelier residents, I think about 1.3%, and it's actually a tax decrease for the Roxbury residents. But with the legislation as it's written, the way it appears on the ballot, it looks like it's a 9.4% increase. So, you know, we have concerns, our business manager has concerns about just the way that appears on the ballot unless, you know, unless the voter comes in educated about what all those numbers mean, it's, you know, there's a good chance that a, you know, a first time, a voter who's being introduced with the budget for the first time is going to see 9.4% and be like, wow. So we just wanted to at least alert that as something the legislature might want to take up if it's not being regarded or whatever. So I'll turn it over to you unless there's others want to, you know, throw a question they know they want answered before they start speaking.
The waiting study is, I think, going to be a huge transformational change to our education funding as it rolls out. We're just, we're having rolled it, we're just in the first year. It's a five-year rollout, so we're not going to really see the impacts right away. I think, you know, that was by design. It gives the tax department, everybody more time to get used to it, and the towns to get used to that transition as it happens. So there's not really anything to report on that other than still going forward, and we'll, and we'll see. And I'm assuming you're getting better data than you did before when we were trying to figure out how it's going to impact everybody as your student body changes and you can look at the numbers. So there's nothing really there. I've heard issues around the ballot wording. I seem to remember that there is some opportunities to write about what the tax increase is, and so I don't, but I agree with you. If they just see the 9%, even though other parts of the language talk about the tax increase being not an issue, that they might still vote against it. Happy to do that. That would be a good issue for government ops to address, I think, but the education committee could deal with it as well. I mean, the issue that I feel like was undone in my time in education was with facilities, which ties in, so it was a big part of the lead study that we did in all the schools that we thought was going to be horrible, and it turned out not to be as bad. We were able to change out a lot of the faucets and things that, without having major multimillion-dollar projects. But then we want to move on to the PCVs, and that could end up being, you know, more than the schools can handle, like in Burlington. Hopefully, we don't have full school teardowns like that, that more of it will be like Cabot, where they find one building, and we'll see what all the remediation plan is at those smaller schools. It's still going to be more expensive than the schools can really handle. So today, had a meeting about like, how are we going to fund these, not only the PCB remediation, but all the other deferred maintenance that all our schools have. Basically, you can't walk into a school without noticing this or that hasn't been taken care of, because the school boards are trying to save money. They don't want to have that huge tax raise on the ballot. They don't want to have that huge tax raise on, on the ballot. So, and we haven't had school construction aid from the state for 12 years or whatever it is. So that discussion, we were getting a report in October. That's the assessment of all the schools. We had an inventory. And I really want to finish that work that, that I kind of started on the Education Committee about making sure that the state supports our schools and making sure we have functionable buildings, have actual good air quality, whether it be for pathogens, but also just oxygen in the room is, is important, obviously, for learning. And we have a lot of classrooms in Vermont that don't have proper ventilation. And so ventilation, HVAC, plus everything else is going to be hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. And I don't want the state just to say, oh, that's too much money. So working today on a plan for how we're going to address that. So that's the main education thing that I'm trying to work on.
I don't know who on Zoom wants to, wants to start off?
I can start. The Finance Committee. Senate Finance is the committee that last year, I probably don't have to tell you, the Ed Fund was pretty flush. Two years ago, COVID hit. We were told we anticipated $150 million deficit and we ended up with a $90 million surplus. Thanks in large part to the federal stimulus, which got sent out to families, people that didn't need it to buy food and shelter. I used it as they should. They stimulated the economy and they bought a lot of things online. Sales tax is our main source of income right now, one of them for the Ed Fund. And we saw a lot of money come in. We also know that that federal stimulus is gone. If you just bought a washer dryer, a big screen TV or a car, you're probably not going to buy another one next year. And so we are looking, we're in good shape. This year, we had the report from our state economists last year. They are still hoping for a soft landing out of this economic boom. You know, not a recession, but could have one. And so we're trying to find a way to use what is essentially one-time money well. Last year, we put, it's up to 34 million into a fund because we knew we were going to have some cleanup from the CPGs. And wanted to have some money set aside. There's, that was just the amount of money we could set aside. It has no relationship to the possible cost. But cleaning up toxins in the school is a good use for one-time money. Hopefully we'll be able to put some aside. We're also trying to balance that against the need to keep tax rates down. And this year we're seeing the huge spike in housing costs and CLAs. And Montpelier's doing a reappraisal, so we're not getting popular, the CLAs. But a large number of towns are, which is just putting their tax rates through the roof. Plus concern that people who were income protected and their house fell under the limit that is protected now find that same house for several hundred thousand dollars more than it was two years ago. They may find themselves exposed to higher property tax bills. So we will be taking a look. I think Jill's coming in.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. To talk to us. There's, there's things we can adjust in the formula, but that's what we're looking at right now. Trying to find that balance and to have some money there to help you. We went through the amount that our bonding capacity has been cut. When I first came to the Senate, I was on Institutions, which does the bonding. And at that point, we were somewhere around 90, 100 million dollars we could bond for. We're now down to 60. Our bonding capacity has been significantly cut by the bond bank. We, so we're trying, but we do know that we are going to have to find a way. We're waiting for that facility study to help schools help with a lot of deferred maintenance. You know, for all the deferred maintenance you may have, there are schools that a lot of people wouldn't send their dogs to, that really have some significant just sanitation problems that need to be cleaned up. And know that if we don't find a way to fund it with other state funds, you're going to borrow bond for it. And that cost is going to go into the Ed Fund and everybody's going to share, but it's going to basically lose everybody's property taxes. And I think none of us wants to see that happen. So all I'm telling you is we're working on it, but no easy business.
Thank you, Senator Cummins. Anna Kate?
Yeah, happy to jump in here. So just today, the Senate GovOps Committee passed H42, which is really an extension of the COVID provisions for open meeting law. So it would allow municipality, well, so legislative bodies that are municipal, as well as school boards, to meet fully remotely if you wanted to. So that's one aspect of it. But I think the most relevant piece is it suspends the requirement to have specified language around the budget ballot item. And so I know there's, there's better requirements about the language for like how school budgets are phrased on the ballot. And my understanding is that with the changes to the equalized people waiting, that language is going to change in this year, 2025. But we're not in this year, 2025. So this bill also sort of extends down to now, the suspension of that requirement. So there is no suggested rephrasing of any ballot language. So it just, it just says the ballot language requirements suspended during the years 2023 and 2024. So I'm going to defer to the other senators as to how the process goes from here. But it is now passed both the House and the Senate. And so I expect that to pass out of the Senate in general probably pretty soon. So everything's got to, have to be in, in, in place by 26th of January. So that is certainly motivational for us to get this done.
Great, that is great to hear.
Can I ask a certified question though? If we vote on the ballot language tonight, that, what Ann just described, what Senator Watson, sorry, just described, won't really affect this year's budget.
Unless we make a motion that would give, say, Libby or Christina the ability to change that language. It's the legislation changes, which we can do.
Oh, okay.
Should be my suggestion.
Okay.
Yes, we took a look at that language today in the Finance Committee because it could impact school taxes or something if it influences how people vote. We didn't have the bill, but we did have Secretary Frenchian, I gather, that the Tax Commissioner was in to the House Committee. The administration opposes removing that language. They think that coming out of all the market funds, that people should be able to have some idea. If they oppose it enough to veto it, nobody knows. But they, they were clear that they didn't think we should remove it. But we basically said we didn't find it, yeah, that it had a whole lot of impact and didn't want to slow down the building anyway, so left it up to Vermont.
Yeah, we had that same testimony today as well. And, you know, part of the thinking around that, I guess that was originally a part of a couple of requirements that would, that potential cost containment. But we asked pretty directly, you know, did the administration feel that this was an effective cost containment measure? And he said, we don't think about it in that way. It was more about transparency rather than a cost containment mechanism.
I appreciate your, your work on that. Kate, or do I have a question? Kate?
As I sent an email, Jill's sort of too new to, to comment on the things you wanted to talk about tonight. I will say that as a teacher, I, my priorities lie with recruitment and retention. Teachers, I think, we heard today in testimony that there are over 1,400 positions that are unbuilt in the state of Vermont. And I'd like to see us move in a direction of fully staffing our schools to start with. And I know that comes down to some really hard decisions that legislatures are going to have to make around housing and childcare. We're going to get folks to come from out of state. We're going to have to talk about Grow Your Own program so that we can move folks out of a pair of jobs and maybe into classroom teaching and also work with our higher ed folks. So there's that. And also as a taxpayer in Montpelier, I share the concerns of some of the folks on the board who are looking at possibly being taxed out of our homes. And I'd like to see us do some, some real good work around reforming how, how we've gained for schools.
And if I may, just to put a bug in your ear, potentially loan forgiveness for special, special educators in particular is what my, my main concern would be. But something from the legislative branch around loan forgiveness may go a long way as well.
Yeah, that was suggested by the Association of Principals, Jay Nichols, today.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I would, I would second that. I think especially attracting teachers to the state, that's a, that's an entry barrier for a lot of, a lot of folks. I think it would make it very attractive for especially younger or, you know, newer teachers to, to want to come here. Well, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
I have one more thing to add.
Oh, go ahead.
We did talk pretty young.
And that's the income-based education funding discussion. Senator Cummings and I were on the Study Committee over the summer and fall to look at it. There's a report out. The talk doesn't say whether we should do it or not, but it says if the legislature was to do it, here's how you would set it up. And there's definitely some, some, some people that are interested in, in exploring that further. And I'm, I'm, I'm one of them. I don't know if we're going to do it this year or anything, but I think it's, could really change the way homeowners think about the, how the funding is made for their local schools and not so tied to their property and all this complicated. It, it still is going to be complicated, but we're going to make it a little less complicated and less worried about the income and the value of your home not matching and being pushed out of your home for that reason.
Yeah, and not just that, I think just general support for education. Like with a, with Vermont having an aging population, you do have a lot of people whose, you know, income is kind of more of a retirement income, but, you know, they've had their house for 30, 40 years. It's way more valuable than when they bought it. And they don't have kids in the school, so they're not connected to the schools. And I know that, you know, a lot of, a lot of people without kids in the school still are strong supporters of the school, but it can be a little different when you don't have kids in the school and, and you're, you're being pinched in terms of how you feel about, you know.
I know you like to maintain other markets, you know, I take conversations with people that I
Know are income sensitized, but they're still going to vote against the budget because they just, they, they just think it's going to affect their taxes. Like, you know, so they're, I think that has a, has a cycle, a large psychological effect on people. Even with our, in our progressive nature that we have of the property tax, it still impacts it.
Exactly. And, you know, when people generalize, you don't have to just go to the market.
And I would also say that Kate gave the, Kate gave the, the data point of 1,400 openings. When I left Education Committee in May, we only had 1,000 open. So we're, we're heading in the wrong direction and that's, that's really sad to hear.
With our district and districts across the state, my wife's a teacher in the Washington Central District and, and they're struggling to stop, you know, Kate's district, so.
Kate, Representative McCann has.
Oh, Kate, thank you for noticing.
Sure.
She's a, yeah, go ahead.
I wish, I had two things to say. I think we need to watch the fact that those numbers are going up. Like Senator Perchlik said, I think the people are leaving during the school year. And, and that's a, that's a real problem to keep an eye on. And I also, I need to hang up here and join another meeting on public banking, but I just wanted to shout out to Mariposa, glad to see you on the board, Kate. Keep up the good work.
Great, well, thank you. Really appreciate you taking the time to, to join us.
Thank you for the invitation.
Yes, and good luck with your first term. Other questions or comments?
I guess I have two. The first one is.
We talked about that, but that since that wasn't part of the, that committee's charge, we didn't put that in the study, but that is something that's being discussed in the State House on how to have second homes have a, because we just have the two, residential and non-residential, basically. So can we have a third category of second homes, basically?
Senator Cummings, do you want to get in?
No, I'm, the, the big question is if we go to income for education, what will that do to the general fund, which depends on the income tax, to fund everything else? Home and community-based services, which are mental health services that I know this school really needs more of. So that's a part of it. If you take it out, what happens? And then just to make quite clear, then the towns will fill up some of that, not all of that property tax, you know, that you vacate. So we've got a lot of questions there. I am anticipating that there will be a bill and that there will be some further refinement to second homes. We cannot differentiate between in-state and out-of-state. We have to tax everybody equally. We're still waiting to see the impact on the child tax credit that we put in last year, the largest tax credit ever. We're not sure what that, and along with several other tax credits we did, we're not sure what that will do to revenue. So we're working on that. We're working on childcare. Again, childcare, paid family leave. My job would be to figure out how to pay for it. And we haven't found a way to raise 200 to 400 million dollars. It's a lot of money. So we're looking at all of this right now. I have no idea where it's going to end up.
And to add to that, the universal yield, we passed it last year, but we only funded it for one year. So it didn't have a funding source, so that's.
So that's another fantastic Senator Cummings has ahead of us.
I assume that we, when we put money in to feed kids, that we were going to feed kids. I know people said it was just for one year, but you don't feed kids free year and then tell them to go hungry. I know there is a lot of concern. I know the cost to Montpelier that has, you know, significant number of children that can afford to buy lunch. And whether or not, you know, I just can't believe in this day in swipe cards, we can't find a way to let kids that can afford to pay, pay for lunch and kids that can't, you know, get free lunch.
Everybody has a swipe card and it goes through, through, and nobody has a blue or green slips. It would take some startup money, money. But that's one we're going to deal with. But I'm assuming that until we find we find another way to deal with it, that cost is remaining in the end. And it will impact it will impact schools because it will add to the tax rate.
Thank you.
The second part was referenced in this discussion, but sort of the status of discussions about affordable quality childcare, but also paired with the question of universal after-school. I know that affordable childcare is rare, especially in very rural areas like this. It's just not here. And I don't know if those are separate issues. The universal after-school, is that tied up with affordable childcare or is it is it a separate?
I I try to bring together, I was on the universal after-school test course, so learned a lot about that and the need and the benefits of it. So I have a big proponent of it. I think often the childcare is the talking about the infant to four-year-olds. But the after-school can deal with adolescents. So I think sometimes it is separate. Like the the report that we got today from the Rand Corporation, the legislature asked for, deals with only the the adolescent. I think it's connected, and I think there's a connection to date family leave or rental leave. Because that, you know, that's what I think is is a good way to provide care for infants that's the most expensive and the most difficult to find as a parent or a family member can stay home with that infant, and that's that solves part of that problem.
The after-school is significant because Roxbury here is was connected to in a very convoluted way that has to do with the merger, connected to Wash, our neighbors, Northfield and Williamstown with their 21st Century Grant. Montpelier Roxbury doesn't qualify for the 21st Century Grant. That grant has been is over. So next year, we have to redesign after-school here in Roxbury, which would add considerable money to our people expense for Roxbury if we were to continue a program like we have now using 21st Century Funds and local funds. So it's it's a considerable challenge. And we don't have, because we don't have a 21st Century Grant, we don't have the staffing. We don't have a after-school staff, you know. So we have to create one for our our school of 40 kids, which is which is tricky.
And we wanted to take it out of all of the out of the agent, not just have it go through the Agency of Education and through that program with the well, with all the federal rules, but to allow community after-school programs or schools that aren't eligible for those federal funds to to get the money from the state for the after-school program. There is, well, there should be money from the cannabis sales tax that goes to after-school. I mean, that was part of the deal, and that's something that the governor still supports. So we don't know exactly how much that money is going to be. Definitely not the beginning, it's not going to be very much, and there's issues there. But I'm still going to be advocating that that money stay for universal after-school because it's a good prevention tool, but also it's.
And it's key in these rural areas, like Brett said, there's no childcare here.
And it's it's huge. Like, a lot of folks can walk can walk in Montpelier, but there's no way that you can walk in an in an area that's geographically as large as Roxbury. And I and there are a lot of places like that that are just, it's two miles and it's, you know, 600 feet vertical, you know, elevation change.
Both ways.
Both ways.
Yeah.
Kristin makes money pulling people out of the mud, right?
Senator Cummings, do you want to get in?
No, I was just I was just saying that there is, you know, part of the cannabis deal is money goes to prevention. A large part of that is after-school. We know we need after-school programs. The we spent this afternoon hearing from the Rand Corporation on the childcare. And again, it comes and comes and goes with how mu, you know, what income level you subsidize, up to what percentage of fam family income do you have families pay? There's a lot of levers. But if once we subtract out the money that is presently in the system, we only have about a $200, $159, $79 deficit. So that's going to take, you know, they basically gave us a whole list of taxes we could raise. Raising taxes is never a palatable thing thing to do, but we're going to be working through that. We know childcare is necessary, economically necessary. You know, we also have a family leave bill, but it is a full-blown family bill where, you know, fathers, mothers, everybody gets time off to stay with kids and gets time off day with, you know, aging relatives, aging relatives or sick kids. It's a good thing, but it costs a lot of money. And I'm one of those that believes you have to keep saying things and eventually it takes hold. My son and his family live, we live in Canada. They have all of these things and they pay 52% of their income in tax taxes. That is an unpalatable number in the United States. No, we have we have lost universal care because the numbers come in so high that we just have a very different attitude to taxation. And so we keep trying to jerry-rig ways to pay for programs that we you know, we we are struggling to find a way to pay for them. We do not have a whole lot of rich people. And a small number number of them in actual dollars pay a huge amount of the actual state revenue. To have one of them move hurt a lot more than to have me move. So we're so we're always trying to find that balance. But the bills are are high. If we do everything, the Building Bright Futures childcare bill is around $400 and some million. And there he is. Peter has joined us. Just to remind remind us what this is all about.
That's right. Well, and and I may need to duck out here soon because it is bedtime for this little guy. And as I'm sure you're a consistency.
Sleepy though.
I know, right? He's ready to go.
And I'm going to have to leave too. I actually have another another commitment at 7:30.
Well, we appreciate both of your time. This is super helpful and helpful and and really appreciate you coming to speak with us. And this both informs us and we look forward to it through the through the session. And congratulations, everyone, on another term.
Thank you.
In touch.
You know, all three of us, we'd be happy to come back, come to any other meetings. I know you've got a lot of work to do. Can't spend all the time on this kind of thing, but really appreciate your work. I know what it takes to be on these school boards, so I really appreciate the time that you put into to do it. But AD comes up contacting one of us, we're working as a good team, three of us, so you can you can bring one of us, you can yourself do it.
Would you be able to stick around?
Sure.
I I just wanted to ask, because we did talk a lot just about the funding of education, which is obviously there for the feedbacks and resources to paper. But I'm I am curious, is there anything at the state level on education quality standards, things that we should be paying attention to since you spent two years or four year time in the Education Committee? If there's any needs in the CBOC.
There's the that Amanda Garces, who spoke earlier, is on the Ethnic Studies Committee. That's coming out with, you know, I don't know what the right word is.
The quality standards are revised.
Right.
We're coming out of Studies Committee, so we're thinking that that is the AOE is working on that right now. So the AOE will act as a.
Right. So we, yeah, we created that group that Amanda was the chair of. And so they worked on these recommendations and then AOE is going to put them into the new standards. That's my understanding. So it's kind of, it's been a multi-year process. There's been a lot of discussion about literacy. We heard a lot of parents, like you heard today, that were very upset about the way we're doing literacy. We heard from other people that had a different opinion. There's there's an interesting divergence on on that I was interested, I found surprising that there was a difference of opinion on how we should teach reading. I just figured we had figured that out by now. So that it's been an interesting discussion and because of some disagreement on on how the the best way to, everybody agrees there was a problem. Like, we have a low kind of test scores, if you want to look at using that as a metric. But there wasn't a really clear path forward when I was on the committee of what we can do about it and then let's try to let's try harder. We did put some money for it. I think we put some some try to help some schools to have more, you know, paraeducators and literacy teachers. I think there was another name for them that I'm forgetting. Yeah. So we did we did put some effort into it, but I think it's an ongoing discussion. And I I mean, Libby knows more about it than I do. But but in the current chair, Brian Campion, is specifically interested in, and he wants to work on it more and hear from more people. So if the school board or the superintendents or parents in the district, like if you work with parents, there's they want to come, then they're they're open to having more of that discussion. And I'm sure the House, they they did some of that. I don't know if they did the same amount. So you could talk to Kate and and see if the the House Education Committee is going to have the same level of discussions around literacy.
Other questions? Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks for for coming out. Yeah, and drive safe because it's getting slick out there.
Yes.
It's right at freezing. It's the worst time to drive.
Yes, right, right.
We're having like, I think, mud season instead of winter.
End of Jan.
Yeah, and now the we've already got like the the ruts and the frozen ruts and it's a mess.
Yeah.
Our Facilities Committee update, I know the Facilities Committee wants to give a good panel to you, Kristen, but if you're not on point, feel free to pass the baton.
I'm happy to share, but I can kick us off in letting you know that the last two months of Facilities and Energy Committee meetings have largely focused on our net zero work and really kind of charting a way forward on that. We spent some time looking at other district and supervisor union approaches to establishing net zero policies and resolutions, like really around the country and seeing what other other folks have done. And after kind of looking at a sampling, we decided to forge ahead and start writing a a net zero resolution for our district. So that's currently in process. Our second draft of that should be coming out any time. And then we'll be revising that and hoping to arrive at a another draft that we want to share out with a group of, you know, vested community members, you know, including our folks, our very good friends now from the Montpelier Energy Advisory Council. Roxbury also has an energy coordinator, the Montpelier High School Earth Group, and then some other local and state folks in the energy sector. Basically pulling all these folks together, this is our draft, this is what we have so far. We would love your feedback on it to arrive at something that feels solid. And we're looking at doing, hopefully, you know, kind of routing that around to reviewers by mid-February with the idea of having something final that we could bring to the board for consideration and possibly approval in March. So that's that's been the the big focus of FME over the last two months. I did have the chance to go to the Montpelier High School Earth Group meeting yesterday to just circle back with them. They were, it was, I think, my first or second board meeting, they presented to the board. So it was a year and a half later, two, almost two years, but it was really great to be able to circle back to them. And and some of the same students that actually gave the presentation were at that meeting. So to honor that work and reconnect with them and show them that, yes, we heard you and we are, we are getting to work, you know, kind of explaining our process. It took some time for our committee to really find its way. And so they are also willing to serve as reviewers of our draft resolution. So they are going to be in the fold for that. And and then I think after we get done with that, we'll kind of get back to, you know, refocusing on on what's next. Certainly, the PCB issue is on the radar and just continuing to try to get information about that. I was looking today at the state website that has kind of the calendar of the testing. And it looks like now.
We're up, yeah, I have a, I actually wrote a letter to go out to the community on our testing schedule.
Okay.
That will go out, it's going through Andrew right now, so it will probably go out by Friday, Monday at the latest.
So I think it was UES and NS are up in the next quarter, essentially.
Yeah, we actually asked the AOE to move our test dates up because we have so much construction happening this summer. And so we want to know before that starts so we can fold it into the construction if we need to, hold in any remediation. So so we asked them to move it up and they were like, sure.
Okay.
And how many how many schools have been tested?
Total in the state?
Yeah.
So far.
Uh, I think it's maybe a third, a quarter.
They're they're behind.
And what are what are they finding?
Um, I can only tell you by anecdote, so know that.
Yes.
Um, I know that, you know, Cabot and Twinfield was referenced. Cabot has found two spots. One wasn't as bad as they thought it was and then, you know, so it's it's all over the place a little bit. Um, there's a school down south. I can't remember the exact, it's not Brattleberry, it's Brattleberry area, you know, really down south has other.
Southeast.
They found PCBs in that school that they're working through. But I don't believe they had to shut down any rooms or the rooms they found it in were not significant enough to influence schooling as much.
So doesn't sound like they have found any school as bad as Burlington?
Not yet. And and the thing to know about Burlington, too, is that they were using different actionable levels when Burlington, like that wasn't a state guided mission, if you will, right? So there, and I don't understand at all with Burlington, but that it was a different level and and all of that kind of thing. So some people have gotten, you know, have done the testing and have gotten reports back right away. And I've heard from other superintendents that they were supposed to get their reports back and they haven't, and they're still waiting. And so they're in a wait and see mode. So I think it's, I think the state is doing its best to try to abide by the timelines and the expectations and requirements. And they're finding that they don't have enough people, like actual people who are trained in this area to do the work. Not that they, I don't think it's a staffing issue. I think it's a, we literally don't have this specialty in our in our state. So I haven't heard terror yet, but also I know the the biggest schools have not, yeah, have not been tested.
You know how long it takes to do the testing?
I'm sorry.
You know how long it takes to do the testing on average?
I mean, our our, I think it's like days. It's not, you know, no, 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 to get the testing back.
Yeah, but the actual testing doesn't take that long, just a couple, a few days over there.
And we're part of UES and MSMS because that's where the construction is going to start sooner or?
I can tell you because I just have that letter up.
So we've got some projects in those schools. But I also know those are the schools that at least from the built, the date of construction seem to be.
Yeah. Again, this letter is going to go out.
Soon.
Soon. And it's really a form letter that the agency has given us. UES is February 27 through March 7. MSMS is February 27 through March 7. RVS is.
So it's like over our break, right?
Yeah, that's during break.
Jan, RVS and MHS are next January.
Okay.
Through March. So, yes, because those are the two buildings that the construction, that's what we asked them about. Through March. So, yes, because those are the two buildings that, the construction, that's what we asked them about.
Do you understand it that one classroom could have a high test and the next classroom could not? And that one classroom would be sealed and the next classroom would be utilized? Is that possible?
Yes.
Really? It's that specific by spots? You really mean spots?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was, you see, there's a bad spot and the whole school.
And we've received, I don't understand it yet. And, because I'm kind of choosing that I will learn to understand it. Should I need to understand it?
Yeah.
Um, however, it's, it's based on occupancy. It's based on child occupancy versus adult occupancy. And it's based on number of hours they're in the space. Like there's all kinds of formulas that they go by. Um, and basically they'll say, this is your level. And then I have to look at, or we have to look at what kind of occupancy for how much time and then make a decision off of that.
Do you make adjustments and still use spaces just differently, potentially?
Potentially. Yeah, yeah. We, as superintendents, we've tried to argue that regardless of what the, um, science tells us to do, if there's PCBs that are found at a higher actionable level in a classroom, it's not going to matter if it's a child or an adult, right? Like so, I really understand why they spend a lot of time going through that. Um, just because, but, uh, we'll see what happens.
I have a question for the facilities committee. Once the resolution, once we have the resolution around net zero, what are, what's the purpose of it? What are we going to do with it?
Yeah, so we've been, we've been wrangling with that also. So, um, similarly, actually, the city of Montpelier first started with a resolution that then kind of parlayed into a policy. So we're, again, we're learning and we're studying and we're looking at what other districts are doing such to, to kind of learn from them. But that's one thought is that from there, we maybe develop a policy. Um, you know, within the resolution currently, you know, there's language about developing an action plan, asking our administration to develop an action plan based on kind of these goals that we're setting. Um, so from there, that might kind of work in concert with developing a policy. Um, but to be honest, we're like definitely finding our way. I mean, one thing that we're also talking about is the fact that we have this earmarked $50,000 from last spring. Um, and so trying to be really mindful about optimizing those taxpayer dollars and what those are best used for, you know, we had discussed, you know, it doesn't make sense to hire a consultant to help develop this resolution. And we said, no, because, you know, let's, let's take a crack at it and see where we land and see if it's something that we can do in-house versus allocating $50,000 toward it. So we feel pretty good about, you know, taking on this piece, but we are trying to discern what's the best use of that funding to optimize this effort. So it's on our minds, but we just haven't figured out the best use. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
As a board, we set aside the $50,000, right? So it's, I guess, we didn't make a decision how to spend it. Um, does, would the committee make that decision how to spend it or how, how would that work?
My sense is that maybe we would have a recommendation after work, the work that we've done and really kind of digging into things that we would have a recommendation to the board on how to best spend that once we've kind of walked that line. Um, Jill, Seiji, or Emma could certainly pipe in if you have a, anything to add on that or a different opinion. But, um, yeah, I think that's the way the process would work. Yeah.
Well, thank you for all the work here. I mean, I'm, I'm really excited the, um, net zero work is moving forward. I know it's important to the board and it's important to the students and it's important to the planet. So, thank you. The next, uh, board action, which is to approve our proposed budget and warning. Um, and given what we heard from, uh, our legislators, it sounds like we might want to amend the language a little bit or at least give the administration, the ability to amend the, the budget language in case something happens between now and the end of the month, uh, which, um, given the Scott administration seems to oppose it. I'm less sanguine than I was before I heard that. Uh, um, is there anything, just before I do that, is there any thing, any changes to the budget that you want to report between now, what we saw on Thursday?
Yep. Christina is here. She's here virtually. So I'll let Christina chime in. She, you do have the tax rate calculation slide. Um, just that part of our former budget presentation. So Christina, do you want to jump in with any piece here?
Well, hi everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm also on child care duty tonight. Um, so the only change since the last time I met with you is the equalized pupils are up by 0.41. So that's what you're seeing here. Everything else is the same.
Okay.
And it's a 9.05 percent increase in net spending per pupil. So that's what you're going to see in the ballot language.
Unless they change it for us. Yeah.
Yeah, the 1.4% tax increase. So we're going to have to get that brought out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And for anyone who might be reporting out, that's 1.37% um, tax increase.
And a decrease for Roxbury.
And a decrease of.
9.5.
Yeah, 9.0, almost 9.6% for Roxbury. So, um, yeah, 1.37% increase for Montpelier, which I think is one of the lowest we've had. Um, and a 9.59% decrease for residents of Roxbury. So.
Are you going to plan on writing an op-ed?
We will write an op-ed. Um, and we will, um, get that out as well too and look back and.
I was just going to say, I think after we vote, we could have a short discussion about what other.
Things we can do, yeah.
Outreach.
Yeah.
Tactics we could employ. We'll just send the op-ed.
Any other updates on the budget? No?
No, that's pretty much it.
Uh, any questions?
What is the, is there an average, um, tax increase around the state for school districts? Like where do we fall in that range? I think we would be low maybe, but.
Do you mean the tax rate or do you mean the per pupil increase?
Um, I was thinking tax rate, but.
Christina, have you heard from business managers, the average around this year?
Um, well, about a month ago, we looked at the tax rates from last year and we were pretty average. So.
What was our tax rate last year?
Have to look it up. Christina, do you remember our tax rate from last year?
I can look it up real quick. It's on the business website.
It wasn't, it wasn't much last year either.
And actually it's in that second column. If you could show this for me.
All right.
We have three years of data in that spreadsheet.
Oh, yeah, I didn't pay attention to that. Sorry.
That's okay. There's a lot of information on there. So. The educational tax rate was a dollar 67 in Montpelier and a dollar 44 in Roxbury.
It was a deep, decrease in Montpelier last year. And Roxbury.
But overall, Lynn, as you were asking, like state wide, you're pretty average.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's also worth mentioning that, that this budget has some one-time expenses that are not going to carry over to next year.
Yes, it does.
I said this budget has some one-time expenses that are not going to carry over.
Yeah, I remember that.
To next, next budget. So, um, you know, that, that per pupil increase is, you know, is, much of that is not, you know, costs that are going to transfer to, what is it, 23, is next year 24, 25? Oh, God.
It's like time traveling, writing these budgets.
Um, any, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I think I entertain a motion to, uh, let's, let's do it in two steps. Let's approve the budget and then approve the warning. Because I think we want to give some, so do I have a motion to approve the FY 24 budget?
So.
So.
Uh, discussion? Yep. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Uh, and sort of we had aye on the phone. I definitely heard aye from Seiji. Emma, do you want to vote? Did you vote?
Aye.
Okay.
I was going to say she's not there. You called her out.
Sorry. Totally the vote on the budget. Uh, great. Congratulations all. Um, we have passed a budget. Now, um, let's, let's do the, the, uh, let's do the warning and then we can have a couple of minutes to talk about how we want to, um, uh, talk to the voters about the budget. Do I have a motion to approve the warning? And I would suggest we approve the warning with a, um, with the ability for the administration to change the language. And I forget which article it is, Article 4 maybe?
Article 3.
Article 3.
Article 3.
If there's a legislative change that allows for.
That data.
Yeah. For a, for different numbers to be used.
Warning of the 2023 annual meeting, um, ballot language, um, and authorize our administration to amend Article 3 in the event the current legislation to, um, remove the restrictions on language does in fact pass before our ballots are printed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, any discussion?
So I have a question because the numbers, like the, um, 2 cent increase are reliant on information we, that is not solid yet. So how do we avoid essentially overpromising something to the voters if we were to say, don't worry, this is only a 2 cent increase, but then the CLA comes in different or the dollar yield? Because the dollar yield isn't.
We can't. So every year that's a, that's a problem.
Right. But, but we haven't had language in the ballot that has been about the tax, about taxes. Do you know what I'm saying? Is that what, how you would edit? I guess I would like to know what we mean by edit the language.
I think we would say like it projected.
Mm-hmm.
Because even the equalized pupil number, right, or the percentage, that, that could change too because we are, uh, in negotiations, right? So we have made some, um, assumptions.
Oh, even what's written here, 9.05 higher?
Yeah, that's, that's a protection.
Oh, it's always, okay.
It's never a solid number.
It's not, never a solid number.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, can I ask a question? Um, I heard that the, there may be some reservation about removing it, um, from the administration. In that case, would they, would we add to it saying that, okay, well, this is the language? But in addition to that, the, you know.
I don't think we can, I don't, I think the law change, unless the law changes, I don't think we have the ability to, to.
Yeah, I guess my question was like, did I hear that right? That they may say that, well, you've got to keep this, but you can tack on some other things.
I don't think, I think, I don't think that's what the, I think the legislation that the governor is, will be given, assuming he's giving it, is going to say basically that there's not a language, a specific language requirement for 23, 24 until they have a new language requirement. And if he just vetoes that bill, then the existing law stays. So, and, and I, I think the chance of, of the administration going back and negotiating something with legislature and it passing by the 26 is, is about as close to zero as, as you can get.
Mm-hmm.
Jill?
As, as Senator Watson said, it's, it's part of a bill that also allows for remote meetings. So if we actually did need to come back together in the worst case scenario, we could hold a remote special meeting, warn it so that those of us who were a quorum could then approve the new ballot language, worst case scenario.
Good. Um, any other questions or comments?
So if it is a law, are we thinking that we would want to remove the per equalized pupil percentage? That percent higher? Or would we want to, like, it would be our preference? We, we could decide if there's no, no language requirement, we could decide either to remove that or to, as Anika was saying, add a language, add a sentence that is, that is a projected tax increase or decrease. Or, oh, I see Christina's raising her hand.
Yeah, Christina, I mean, my, my preference would be to have more information rather than less. So to keep, to keep that there, an add and a projected tax increase of 1.37% for Montpelier and a decrease of, what was it, 9.59 for Roxbury? Christina?
Um, I would just say that I'd have to see if they're going to propose new language or if they're going to let us decide what language we put in the ballot. So that's to be determined. I haven't seen anything. I know that they're trying to change it, but I don't know if they're going to give us other language or if we get to make it up.
Gotcha.
So the, the bill as it's written right now, H42, simply says it suspends the language that's required. So it says 16 BSA, 56 subsection 11D, which requires a school board to use specified language for a school budget ballot. The ballot language requirement is suspended during the years 2023 and 2024.
Yeah, that's what I have. So.
Okay, we get to make it up.
So we get to make it up. And our, our, I don't think we need to put this in the motion. Our suggestion to the administration, if that passes, is that they add a sentence about the tax implications and leave the number about.
That's what I recommend the motion.
Huh?
Do we amend the motion? Because I thought the motion was giving them the authority.
I think we can keep the motion as it is and the board has kind of spoken on it. And, you know, we can, we can scold Libby badly if you follow it.
The board has made their wishes clear.
Yeah, the board has made its wish clear. So, um.
Yeah, we can draft the members.
Yeah.
It's with the special meeting we're.
Public scolding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public shaming. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. So we are on to policy monitoring. Uh, so we have two, uh, uh, policy monitoring reports to approve. Uh, one is DO8 alcohol and drug-free workplace and the other is D11 alcohol, drug and alcohol testing, which I think just applies to our transportation.
Pretty much.
Which is pretty much done by.
STA, yeah.
STA, yeah.
Yeah.
Were we going to talk about plans?
Oh, yes. Well, you know what? Since we're there, let's just approve these and then we'll talk about plans. But thank you for.
I suggested it, then forgot.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Um, uh, I think these are pretty, pretty easy monitor reports. Do I have a motion to approve the monitoring reports?
Uh, I move to approve, um, the monitoring reports for policies D8 and D11.
Do I have a second? Thanks, Lynn. Uh, any discussion or questions about the reports? All's in favor?
Aye.
Um, any opposed? All right, now we can talk about, um, so I will definitely do an op-ed and I welcome help on that. I mean, we could do, we could do a, I could do it jointly with, um, someone from Roxbury, Mia, you and I could do it as chair or vice chair. Um, one thing we might want to do is, is maybe we could do two op-eds, one for the bridge and one for the Times Argus. I don't think either paper will take an op-ed that's been published elsewhere. So it might be nice for, say, Kristen and me to, to do Times Argus and maybe Rhett and Mia to do the bridge. So it gets both places. Um, once it's out there, uh, I am happy to circulate it on like Frontport Forum and, um, and Facebook. I also think everybody here, as long as we don't get a conversation going, can, can do a quick social media post on the budget. Uh, you know, we get into trouble when Rhett does a media post and then Kristen comments on it and then Jill comments on it. But if you just do one and then like, let it sit, that's great. Can we use...
We're doing the podcast with Jim and Kristin.
Yeah, we're doing a podcast, which is also something that we can circulate on social... Share on social media. Those are kind of some immediate ways and you know, I'll open up the floor to other ideas. But that's kind of what we have in the cooker. And I think doing two op-eds, one for the Bridge and one for the Times Argus, would be good. And we can... How about... Why don't we do one and Rhett and Mia, you want to do another?
Sure.
Perfect.
That we're, you know... Because I think sometimes budgets are just... These kind of budgets are overwhelming for people. It's so much money. And I think it's really good to try to be clear about our focus and direction and why things are the way they are.
I wouldn't hesitate in that, you know, to kind of to that point to also just email your own sort of circle of people. One of the things I'm remembering is when Jody presented the Career Center budget, that our voters are going to see these two... These two items on the ballot. It will look confusing that the Career Center is listed differently, but it's actually included in this number that we just approved. And that feels like a piece of information that will be really valuable just as like, human to human to be clarifying that. Not only the fact that this is a... This budget is an investment in our students and in our staff and in the education in the district. Those... So I would really encourage folks to, even if it was just to take the Times Argus, you know, op-ed that Jim and Kristin are going to write, put the link in an email and say, "Hey, everybody, I just want to encourage you to vote yes on the budget. Here's some..." You know, read this if you want, but please vote yes.
We cannot ask people to vote yes.
You can ask people to vote.
We can ask people to vote and we can educate them on why it's a great budget. But we cannot ask them to vote yes.
That's very good clarification.
Yes.
Okay. Make sure you vote. And I support the budget?
You can say that.
Okay.
You can say that you support the budget, but you can't say, "Please vote yes on the budget."
Okay, good.
You can say the board unanimously approved this budget.
And here's why I support it as a board member. And here's what it does.
Okay.
But you can't say, "Please vote yes."
Okay.
You can say, "Please vote." As every...
That feels like a very important clarification. I appreciate you saying that. And so don't say, "Vote yes." But I think sending a personal email to your circle, your network, and with information and saying, "Please make sure to vote on the budget," would be really helpful. And I think the same is true in a slightly different sense for Front Court Forum or the Facebook group page, that it needs to show up in, you know, more than once. And I think maybe kind of with increasing frequency, leading up to Town Meeting Day. So I just would encourage all of us to, like, don't hold back. You know? Maybe each of us, we for sure will at least each post twice or something. And, you know, there's no danger of getting into a... Like, commenting on someone's thing in Front Court Forum necessarily. But yes, make sure not to engage in conversation so that we don't break open meeting law. But I would say like...
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah.
Get it out there.
Send it out. And you can always start a new link if you want to avoid... I mean, one other thing, I mean, if folks have time for it, you know, if there are a couple of places where we could go and talk. I know we've done the Senior Center in the past.
Usually we get the admin over at the Senior Center.
Yeah.
Which is a super fun thing for the admin to do. I can contact Tina to see if I can set that up.
Yeah. And that's kind of the other place we've gotten is with Crowe.
Oh, yeah, they like...
Yeah. But if there's other places, either in Roxbury or Montpelier, that you think, you know, you could gather an audience, you know, just leave me, but feel free to reach out and ask. You know, come and talk. And ask your questions.
The community volunteer group called Roxbury Roots, and we're hosting monthly potlucks. So that's on Sunday. So that's another venue for us to reach a bunch of people.
So this year, we've made some decisions that we are very proud of. And there's been some misunderstanding about what... How the budget is structured and what's included and what's not. Do we try to... Is... Would an op-ed be a good place or a bad place to get into that? It feels like a slippery slope of more misunderstanding. I don't know.
I think a well-written op-ed can line out kind of how this plugs into, you know, the broader district values and goals and how we're making, you know, key and responsible investments around that.
Rhett's asking specifically of, "Does it include the track?" Conversation about the track. Because this budget does not include the track. So to make that a clear statement in anything that's written to the community.
I had that in mind too and I thought that's what you're getting at. I think we can... I think we can articulate...
Cause more problems.
Yeah.
It might be... It might also be good to make that distinction that that track money is not part of the budget.
Yeah.
Right? Because there is some misunderstanding that this budget includes track.
Yeah. I think that's worth...
That's worth mentioning.
I think it's worth mentioning because I think there's some infusion around there. Yeah.
I'm going to offer to, you know, just be at Capitol Browns once or twice between now and then if people wanted to swing by and ask questions or whatever. So...
She'd like me to join you, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thanks. I will coordinate.
Or if I can join the roll as well.
Nice evening sitting out in front of Randy's store.
Even on a night like tonight?
Sometimes. Depends, you know? Two hours, you know? Got to hit the right window.
So I think we've got a... I think we've got a plan. And, you know, as Mia said, recirculate. You know, as we get closer to Town Meeting Day, I think everything we've got, you know, pop it up to the top of the of the social media thing so people have it.
What's the thinking around Town Meeting Day? Like, two weeks before Town Meeting? What's an ideal?
I mean, if you and I can get a draft done in like, two weeks, I think even like, maybe like, mid-February? Because a lot of people vote early. And also, I mean, the other thing too is...
That's a month away.
Yeah, it's a month away. Remember that Town Meeting Day falls on on the winter break? And this was actually... This was actually the one time during my tenure in Montpelier where the budget failed. One of the reasons it failed was because a lot of people left for that break. A lot of kids, you know, a lot of people with school-aged kids. And so the budget always passes in Montpelier. I didn't have time to vote. I'm in wherever on the... You know, on the 7th. You know, came back and was like, "Oh, my God." Like, so... So, you know, people oftentimes will vote before they leave. And then I think also, you know, urging people to vote and reminding people that they can vote early. So... And then, you know, we can always recirculate that stuff, you know, a few days before the meeting. Great, anything else on that? And it sounds like you've got got a plan. And thanks everyone for...
That was the Bridge for Rhett and me?
Yeah, the Bridge.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if Richard Shear still does his...
He's not doing it this year. He's running for mayor.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
It's unfortunate.
Huh?
It's unfortunate.
Yes. Is there a Richard Shear stand-in?
I don't think so, no. I think that is only Richard's show.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's what I was suspecting. So I think we're on to, unless there's anything more of that? I think we're on a fourth reading of a 2021, 22, 23, and 24. And I don't know if... Is Emma still with us? I think we've incorporated...
I'm still here, Jim, but I would prefer you to sort of walk through and then I can type in if I need to.
All right. I think we've addressed most of the changes. And I need to get the things up. Most of the changes that have that were requested. Are there any questions about the changes? And I'm not... It looks like they're just linked. Okay. Yes, Lynn?
On A22, I just need to know what this means. I know it's a legal thing, but I don't actually know the implications of it. Under policy, the last sentence, it says, "Nothing herein shall create a private right of action." What does that actually mean?
So... That language, I think, is... That language is in there because there are, you know, there are state and federal rights of action for, you know, actions that are discriminatory. You know, we're putting in things that may arguably be beyond... Be beyond what the district would be liable for under state and federal law. So we are trying to make clear... And I think the risk is pretty low because if you don't have a statute to bring it under, you have a statute to bring it under. But that anything we're going kind of beyond what we normally would be liable for is not creating an actionable item.
And then the only other thing that happens on A23?
Yes.
In the second paragraph, the second sentence, I think you've put moves the district forward twice in there by mistake, unless I'm reading it wrong.
Where was I?
The second paragraph, the second sentence.
It is struck out in the line.
Yeah.
Line item or whatever.
Okay, I didn't have a struck-out version.
Yeah.
Yes. What you're pointing out has been corrected.
Okay, great.
I have a couple...
Yeah.
Just comments. On A23...
Okay.
I have more just questions, which maybe the board may say, "Yeah, that looks fine in the policy language." And then I think a different conversation has to happen of timing and when and that kind of stuff. So it may be just a thing to point out that has worked for the board to do or conversation for the board. Done at the bottom under implementation, where it says, "The board will assure that there are resources devoted to implementing the goals and will receive monitoring reports on a quarterly basis to ensure effective implementation of strategic plan."
Do we should strike out strategic?
Did you strike the strategic plan?
I think strategic plan...
That was supposed to be goals.
It's supposed to be goals.
So some of my questions there, are they board-made goals? Are they district-made goals? Are they both? And then the other word that stuck out to me was quarterly because we aren't in session for, if you think of a year? Or are we thinking of a school year? Right? So a full school year, that would be every three months quarterly, which makes sense. But if we're talking about a school year, there won't be much data to report out on for one quarter.
Yep.
So is that the correct language? And if you divide a school year into quarters, then it's almost...
That's too much.
Yeah, it's almost every third board meeting or... Anika's looking at me smiling because he knows math at the top of my head is not my strength. But Anika, I'm sure can do that math for me.
Well, definitely strategic plan should be goals. And then whose goals? I mean, in terms of quarterly, I'm less concerned because one quarter might be, we're out of session, we don't have any report.
Oh, just as long as that's okay. I just don't want to be in non-compliance with the policy because of that. Does that make sense?
I'll just say, as an individual board member, the way I read it was for the calendar year, not the school year.
Yeah, that's how I read it too.
And I think that that could still be the case. Like, it would still make sense to me if we had a meeting in, I don't know, the beginning of August or something for us to still be getting some kind of readout. You know, even if this... Even if school's not in session, I think is all I'm saying.
I think it would just need to be clarified as to what that is.
Yeah, okay.
What's the data you're looking for there? You know what I mean? And then I just want to make sure the board...
It goes strategic plan there twice. Okay, so that paragraph needs cleaning up. Okay.
Then that last sentence, "On a yearly basis, the board will revisit the vision and strategic plan, evaluate and make adjustments according to input from the community and the superintendent." Like, that's a big commitment for the board every year to relook at a vision? And is that the commitment the board wants to make? Like, it makes sense to revisit goals every year. Of course, that makes sense. But the vision, would we... Would the board change that every year would be my question.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Again, just as a sole board member, I would... I read that as revisit the vision to compare to how we're doing. Like, assess progress. But I think... But I think your point is well-made and we should probably just clarify that language. If that's what we mean.
Yeah, and I was kind of taking it as that can be a... Are we okay with our current vision? Do we need an update this year? Everyone's okay with it? Okay, done? Or like, this is a year where we really think the vision is starting
I see.
to drift away from where we want the district to go and we do need a process? So...
So if it's that simple?
Yeah.
Then that's fine.
But if it's doing like a fishing process every year?
Right, I don't want the board to set themselves up for something that they can't commit to.
I mean, I kind of took it. And I think we could clarify that and clear some other cleanup in that language we need to do. I mean, I take that as a just a quick check-in. Like, you know, so that way, you know, five years doesn't go by and people look at the vision and be like, "Why do we have that?" So we can kind of just keep a, you know, a temperature check of whether we still feel the vision matches where we want the vision to be. And if it doesn't or if it starts to drift, we get out ahead of that earlier rather than, you know... Yeah.
It's not easy to write a vision. But once you have a vision, it's easy to say, "Oh, okay, we've got the vision statement done." Right? And then... But I think being forced in a way to look at it once a year, you know what I mean? I think it just kind of keeps it in the face-forward position and helps us think, are there adjustments here we want to make? Because if we just said we do it every five years, sometimes a lot happens in five years. Sometimes not a lot happens, but, you know.
It's not recent history.
A lot happens.
Okay, so we'll clean up that paragraph for... We'll have a fifth reading.
A fifth reading, yes.
Set a record with these.
And then the only other thing that I had on A24...
A24, okay.
In the purple part.
Purple part. I think we should just color-code all our policies.
The superintendent must ensure the board is adequately informed for vermin studies. The superintendent must ensure the board is adequately informed of the requirements. Just two and three, significant challenges and significant student-staff organizational accomplishments. Those terms are slightly subjective, and so what I consider significant challenges may not be what the board considers significant challenges and vice versa. Um, and so I think either that just deserves a lot of communication between myself, or whoever's sitting in my seat and the board, or, um, some potentially more objective language.
No.
I don't know how, I have no recommendation for what that language could be, but it's just, I wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
And just.
Well, can you tell me which sentence you're talking about again?
Yeah, number two and three, Emma, in the purple part on A 24.
The, the part that I add, oh, oh, I should.
Yeah, the, the part that's a cut and paste from our current policies.
From the current policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, provide information on significant challenges, the plan for addressing them and results, provide information on significant student-staff and organizational accomplishments.
That means not insignificant, Livy.
Just the word significant is subjective, as well as challenges, potentially.
But I just didn't add significant. There's no metric, it's up to you. I mean, you're going to be, I'm, I'm assuming that you're going to be honest with challenges that you want the board to be aware of.
Yeah.
And I would hope that other superintendents would do the same.
It could be that you just take the adjective out, that might be sufficient.
I don't know if that's, Lynch, it's kind of your judgment, and we hope that you're, you know, we expect that you will be honest, I guess. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I read significant as kind of giving you a bit of latitude to, because if we just say challenges, then like technically you need to tell us like everything.
Jim's like, I know your job, Livy.
It's really hard to get out of bed this morning, just want to report that.
Jim's like, I meet with you weekly, Livy, there's a lot of challenges. Uh huh. I can see what you mean. Yeah, I can see what you mean.
Yeah.
Something just to think about.
Okay.
I think, I think with, with lots of communication, we can, we can get through that, yeah. I just wanted to point it out.
Thanks for taking notes, Emma.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the way I read it is that, like, if there's something, you know, a major bad thing or a major good thing, you're going to bring it to us.
Mm-hmm, yep, okay.
Major challenges.
But, yeah. Like, yeah.
I'm coming back to the section, sorry, in A 23, just about that Livy brought up, you know, the on a yearly basis. Do we feel like in that, uh, in that policy, and we're sort of consistently, or we're saying that we'll kind of consistently be checking back, you know, with the vision, but that we should articulate, like, every three years, we will take like a substantive look at, you know, the vision and strategic plan to like ensure it still feels current, relevant, and responsive to current conditions, such that, you know, we are just, you know, with a critical eye and with a process, really kind of revisit? It's one thing, I guess, like revisit, I guess I just mean, like, are we saying enough in there that like, this is our kind, these are our guiding principles, and then do we need to carve out something where we say every three years, we are going to like reevaluate and actually have a process?
You mean write that out?
Yes.
I, I'm personally, I think as long as, and I think Lynn made a good point, as long as we keep it facing forward and look at it every year, that makes sense. I kind of feel like going through a major process on a timed basis could be in some cases a waste of resources, because there, there are things that, you know, I mean, like, like the merger was a place where, you know, revisit made sense. Um, you know, you know, a major administrative change, some, you know, big substantive change in the law, um, change in the demographics of our community. I mean, these are all things that could like precipitate that, whereas like, you know, going through a visioning process every three years, just because we have it in policy, there, there might be a third year where it just, it makes absolutely no sense. And then, so we couldn't get a place where like, you know, we, we have to do it on the third year because we have to do it, and then the next year, you know, some legislative bill forces it to merge with, you know, another district, and then all of a sudden we've got to do it again.
I guess I'm not saying that you launch like a whole visioning process, community while, like, I get that that is, it's a huge endeavor and certainly has a cost associated it with it, but, um, just more, I don't know, just the idea of just looking at it and reading it is, is, is one thing, obviously, but then to, you know, take a, just a, a critical eye to it is, is another, but as long as like, within here, it's like, we are circling back to this, this is consistently kind of guiding our actions and guiding our strategies.
To, to me, I, I took it as the, the circling back has an action item of, hey, we need to have a visioning process because we're drifting away, away from it at some point. So in that check, annual, you know, yearly check, third year, or fourth year, or second year, we may decide, yeah, we need to have a visioning process. So that's, to me, that's how it came. I mean, I don't know if we want to add that as a, as a line in there, that one of the action item of that would be to know if we need another visioning process, but I don't think that's necessary, um, as, as long as we all agree that that's check, checkup is going to have that action item as part of it.
Are we coming up on year three of this particular vision process anyway? It's been a while.
Uh, point taken. Uh, how do, how do people feel about that? Are they comfortable with, with this language, maybe adjust it a little, or do you feel any more?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this? It sounds like we'll have one more reading, and then, or?
One more just for this one.
Just for A 23?
And A 24?
I mean, I, I kind of feel since they replace A one, A 01 through A 03, we should just move them all along and do it all at once, so that we don't have.
Oh, yeah.
Because otherwise, I think there's this weird, if we approve a few of them and not all of them, I think there's a question.
Conflicting policies.
Yeah, what's, what's in place and what's not.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just bring them back for one more reading.
Yeah, because, because we're not, I mean, we're not lost in the wilderness without, without these people.
Okay.
We're lost in the wilderness for, for absolute reasons, but not this one. So I think, any other thing on these four, five policies? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Thanks, everyone.